Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for August 28, 2023. Kristin Resch if you'll do the roll call. Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Faray?
Lisa, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Nope, now we can. Are you here?
I'm here.
Okay.
Councilmember Pfeiffer? Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Mr. Marriott?
I'd like to move, we excuse Councilmember Pfeiffer from tonight's meeting.
Votes are cast. Ms. Faray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
The other four of us have voted yes as well. That passes six to zero. Mr. Pfeiffer is an excused absence. Thank you. We have a couple of workshops tonight that we want to have some discussions on. First one's going to be on the pavement management program. And who's going to be presenting this tonight?
Right here, sir.
Very good.
Britton, Thomas, and the men and women of us are going to be presenting to you tonight.
Great, thank you.
But good evening, City Council and Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're going to talk about the pavement management program. We'll give you a quick overview of the program, talk about our goals a little bit, a little bit about the update for this year and how it's going so far. Then we'll look ahead to 2024. We'll talk a little bit about some budget scenarios and funding options. And tonight, we're looking for some direction from Council either this evening or in the future as to a preferred option to fund the program as we head towards our goal. Before we get to the slides, I'll give a little bit of an introduction on our team. We have Ben Swaya. He's our pavement manager. And he's been with the city for 16 years, most recently as the utility supervisor for water system operations. He started in May at his current position, and he's been working hard, learning the software, and developing the pavement strategies that you'll see shortly. Next, we have Christine Biddle in the audience here, and she's been with the city for four and a half years, the last two with the program. And she's really been our rock throughout the last two years, and we've had quite a bit of transition on this team. So we're lucky to have her, and she's kept the program moving. And most recently, we have Fabian Ruiz. He started in his current position as a coordinator today. Today's his official first day. He has been with the city for three years, most recently as a municipal inspector, and he's been inspecting all of our asphalt out there. You may remember him from the field trip. He was, he did a lot of the emceeing during the field trip. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, Britton. Good evening, everyone. I'll jump right into these slides. Maybe. Is this thing on? It's not working. There we go. Now it works. Okay, first of all, the purpose of the pavement management program is to maintain our 1,500 lane miles of paved roads. Pretty simple. To point out the strategic alignment, strategic result number four specifically mentions providing financial options for City Council in order to eliminate the street maintenance deficit, and that's what we'd like to do tonight. But first, a quick overview of the program. We have three main project areas with the pavement management program. The first and highest priority is the pavement maintenance, and by that I mean surface treatments, anything from crack seal, slurry seals, hot chip, and cape seal. Anything that we put on the pavement to preserve it when it's in good condition. So that's the keeping good streets good. Next is pavement rehabilitation. That's your milling overlay and reconstruction. And there's some sub-priorities there. We prioritize arterials over collectors, over locals. The heavier the traffic, the higher the speed, the more critical it is that we maintain the pavement quality. And then last is concrete replacement. And as far as concrete replacement goes, with this program, we're doing that as needed to support the pavement rehabilitation. So we're replacing concrete per ADA requirement, specifically replacing curb ramps, also additional curb gutter and sidewalk as needed. And our ultimate goal with this program is to achieve a network average PQI of 70. It's pavement quality index. And the immediate goals, the PQI of 70 is more of a long-term goal. The immediate goals include keeping good streets good, reducing the percent of our network that's deficient. And I'll talk a little bit more about the percent deficiency here in a minute. And so why 70 PQI? Why is that our goal? Well, we think it's a good goal. We think it's the right goal, not just because it's nicer to drive on nice roads, but it's nicer to look at, less noise, less wear and tear on vehicles, less fuel consumption, less air pollution. Our street teams and our traffic teams spend a lot of resources filling potholes, putting the pavement markings down, striping our roads. And having a street network in good condition would allow them to spend less resources doing those things and make their job easier. So here's the percent deficiency, just to explain that a little more. This is, it's tracking PQI, same thing, but it differentiates between arterials, collectors, and locals, so it's consistent with our priorities. So when is a street deficient? If it's an arterial and it's under 60 PQI, we consider that deficient. If it's a collector under 55, that would be deficient, and a local under 50. And on the left side of this slide, excuse me, I've included the current status PQI of those function classes. So our arterials are actually at a 63, collectors at a 50, and locals at a 30. And then our, of course, our total network PQI is at a 38.
Right. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. Sorry to stop you for a second on your roll here. Can you define and help us help visualize the difference between arterials, collectors, and locals, just so everyone's on the same page?
Sure. Arterials are the heaviest traffic, busiest roads. They're the main arteries going through town, 64th, Kipling, the, yeah, 72nd, exactly, 80th. And then collectors are kind of the main roads going through a neighborhood is how I would describe those, and locals, of course, are your residential streets.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So some of the things we've been working on and that we're going to continue to work on, improving standards and specifications in our warranty process. If there's one thing we can do to set ourselves up for success, it's to build a better road to begin with. Better built streets going to be easier and more affordable to maintain, whereas if it fails, it's more of a burden to the program and more expensive. More clearly defined roles and responsibilities for the pavement management teams, specifically with the addition of a new pavement management coordinator. More accurate estimates, so anytime we go out and mill and see what's under the surface, we're going to see some surprises. But there's a lot of things we can do to minimize those and have more accurate estimates and planning. Planning farther ahead with our vetting process, so including a lot more areas when we go through the process of vetting and consulting our internal and external, you know, utilities and everybody that we could have conflicts with, other projects. And that, when we go through that process, we're including a lot more, trying to set ourselves up for several years instead of just, you know, one project. We've been networking with other Colorado cities. I've talked with my counterparts in Denver, Aurora, Lakewood, Colorado Springs, Longmont. Talked about what kind of treatment types they've been using, what's worked for them, what hasn't worked, how they fund their programs. We've had some very fruitful conversations. That's been helpful, and we're planning a kind of a field trip to go and look at some of the treatment applications that they've used, that have worked for them, that we haven't used yet. So we're going to go look at some of those, and we plan on doing some test areas, applying some new surface treatments and seeing what works best for Arvada. And then utilization of Road Matrix. I think you're familiar with Road Matrix. That's our pavement management software. It's a very powerful tool, but there's a lot of things we can do to make it more useful, more reliable. Like recently, we've been building projects into the software to be able to view the results, which is extremely helpful. You can mix and match, try different areas, different treatment types, and analyze the results and make sure that we're maximizing results across the whole network and really utilizing our budget. Superssections, that's a way of, kind of has to do with the recommendations that the software makes as far as treatment types. And getting better or more realistic recommendations out of the software. Utilities data integration, that's specifically referring to water and wastewater data, specifically pipe type, like where we have PVC water mains, line sewer mains, and it's helping us find areas where there's not likely to be any conflicts with utilities projects. And then decision trees, the whole software program's built around these decision trees that tell us, and we set it up this way, but it says when we do certain treatment types and when we don't, when we do nothing, trying to maximize cost effectiveness. And there's a lot of, I think, a lot of room for improvement there and things that we can do to make it work better for us. Treatment cost updates just helps us get better estimates, helps us plan better in the budget scenarios that you'll see later. It helps make those more accurate. And then calibration of projected results, just referring to the, the way the software, you know, with specific treatment types, it gives you a certain boost in PQI, like a milling overlay would increase PQI by this much, whereas the surface treatment might increase it a little less, or it might just be kind of a hold on the deterioration. And we want to kind of compare the projected results with the actual results that we get and make sure that that's as accurate as it can be. Moving on to the 2023 program overview, here you see a breakdown of the budget allocation. 5.7 million to asphalt rehabilitation, so milling overlay and reconstruction, 3.8 to concrete replacement, and one and a half to asphalt maintenance, all those surface treatments. And so what did that get us? Well, we touched 95 lane miles with our surface treatments. We did 28 lane miles of rehabilitation. And the best number we have for tracking our, kind of our productivity for concrete is how many curb ramps that we do. And we project that we'll be at about 395 curb ramps for 2023. Of course, there's a lot of additional curb gutter and sidewalk that goes along with that. And what are the results on the whole street network? Well, we're going to fall from a 40 to a 38 average PQI. And it's not good. It sounds bad. If we did nothing, we would fall to a 36, so we are making some, not progress, but we're making a difference with the funding that we have and the projects that we're completing. That percent deficiency will increase to a 70% after this year compared to a 73% had we done nothing. Now, for 2024, we've got a plan here. It's not quite set in stone, but it's pretty solid. This is what we can do with our current budget, about $12 million, with $8 million allocated to asphalt. And we have the projected results after analyzing this project with our Road Matrix software. And the projection is that we would fall from a 38 to a 36, that our percent deficiency would increase from a 70 to a 73.
Ben, quickly, and that's spending, how much in '24? Oh, I see it up there.
That's just based on our current budget. So if we have $12 million, about $8 million going to asphalt.
Right.
About three going to concrete replacement, and the eight is for maintenance and rehab, surface treatments and milling overlay.
Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Now, this next slide's my favorite. This is what we can do with an additional $8 million. This was our budget request for 2024. We can maintain the PQI with a total budget of $20 million, $14 million allocated to asphalt, about five to concrete replacement. You know, and this slide says we can stay at a 38. I actually believe we can slightly improve the PQI based on the analysis in Road Matrix, maybe by a .2 or so. It's not much, but it's going the right direction, and we can actually reduce the percent of our network that's deficient from 70% to 69%. And the best thing about this, this is an actual project that we built into the Road Matrix. We have a very high level of confidence in the, in the results and our ability to get this work done. All of these areas are, they've already been vetted. The concrete's already done. There's nothing stopping us from doing this work except the lack of funding. Now I want to move to some budget scenarios. I mentioned our very high level of confidence in the previous slide and the projected results for that. Excuse me. We don't have quite as high a level of confidence in these budget scenarios. They're a little more theoretical. This is, we put a budget into the software, and it makes recommendations for treatments and areas and, you know, the projected results if you were to do what it actually recommends. They're not real-world projects. These, you know, it hasn't been vetted. And it tends to be a little bit optimistic, but it will give us a good idea of where we're at and what it would take for us to move towards our goals and make significant progress. So I'm going to go through some of these scenarios. This first one just shows our current budget compared to the requested budget, and it's a flat $8 million a year, that bottom line, where you see the slow, steady decline versus $14 million a year. That's with the, you know, the total budget of $20 million. And you see that we can make progress, and it kind of levels off. And towards the end of this 10-year analysis, it starts to drop off slightly, and that's because the software accounts for 5% inflation. So with a flat budget, you're not going to get the same value out of it over time. And so this next one shows the same budget, shows the current budget for '23 and '24, and then in 2025, going to a $20 million budget. And in this case, it's $15 million going to asphalt maintenance and rehabilitation. Then we incorporated a 10% increase each year thereafter, and this is the slow and steady progress example here. Now, what about our goal, right? Our goal is still to get to 70 PQI, so what would it take to get there? This graph shows three different scenarios, one where we get there in three years and then hold for 10, one where we get there in five and hold for another five, and then one where we get there gradually over the whole 10 years. So this gives you an idea of what we're looking at to actually get where we want to go. But the other takeaway I'd like you to notice is that it pays to make a big investment upfront. You see that you save millions of dollars by getting there in three years versus 10. So with that in mind, I want to throw a few more budget scenarios at you. Here's four more. And in these, it's current budget for '23, '24. And then we simulate infusing in a big investment into the program over the next three years before going back to the current budget. So the bottom line there is $40 million a year for three years, starting in 2025. Going up from there, it's $50, $60, and $70 million per year over those three years before going back to the current budget. And you can see about where that might get us as far as PQI. And on the bottom right there, you see the total funds represented. So that bottom line with the $40 million per year, that would be, if we got $150 million and we had three years to spend it, about $10 million would go to concrete replacement, and the other 40 per year to asphalt maintenance and rehabilitation. So, yeah, there's some options at this point. I think I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Brian Archer.
Can I ask you a couple of questions, Ben, before we pass it off to Brian Archer? The big question I would have is, because most of this work is not done by city crews or by us, right? The pothole patching is, but when we do a streets rehabilitation, whether it's concrete or asphalt, we're contracting that out to somebody else. If we were to make such a giant increase in our ability to spend that over time, are the contractors we work with, is the private sector able to take that money? You know, are they, are they spooled up to the point where if we said, you know, last year we spent $11 million in total with you, now we're going to spend 25 next year, can they do that?
I believe we'd need multiple contractors. We would have, we would be multiplying contracts and having multiple contractors to spend that kind of money. I believe, I believe the industry would be able to do it, especially those last four examples. I think those are within the realm of possibilities. I think the 70 PQI examples, like in three years, I'm not sure that's really feasible. Because that's, I could go back and look at what the budget was for those three years, but it's pretty.
That's okay. It just seems to me that the contractors who do this type of work, you know, are typically all working for municipalities or counties or the state, one or the other. And that, you know, they, I would guess from year to year, they're somewhat lined out in their work and that this would be a big jump.
I think there are limitations there, but we've also seen other cities be able to, you know, secure additional funding. And I think Colorado Springs is at $70 million a year. I mean, they're a lot bigger city and everything, but I think it is possible.
Okay. And that leads me to my last question, which is, in looking at all this, have you looked at what other similarly situated cities, somewhat our size or somewhat physically our condition, what they're doing? Like, I'd be curious, you know, what's Westminster spending on these types of programs, or Lakewood, or, you know, any of the others that are relatively similar in age, similar size? What do things look like for others?
Yeah, we've looked at it, and the general consensus is that, you know, there's only one way to do it, and that's with some kind of, like, sales tax or some kind of additional funding source. Like, nobody has the money to really keep up, it seems, without some kind of, you know, additional funding, but.
I don't mean that. I just mean the current situation, like, what's Westminster spending on their asphalt replacement program annually right now, just by comparison?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers with me at the moment, but they are in a little bit better condition. I think Arvada is unfortunately towards the bottom of the list as far as our PCI or PQI.
Right, okay.
So, you know, the better your street network, in theory, the more affordable it is to maintain. You can do more cost-effective maintenance and less costly rehab as you kind of improve the overall pavement quality.
Right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian?
Thanks, Ben, mayor and council. I've been with the city 27 years. I'm currently the finance director. I've had this job for eight years. I didn't give that to Britton in advance, so. So ultimately, there's really only three ways to generate additional revenue. So we'll talk about some options. For you that were here in 2016, some of this would look very familiar to you. So really, our first option is some sort of a tax, something that we're going to levy either on our residents or people that use our roads to get to our wonderful shops and restaurants. And so the first would be a sales tax increase. Ultimately, pretty easy to administer, really requires a vote of the citizens to do that. It would be across anybody that comes into the city. You don't have to be a resident to do that. And to give you a rough idea of what we could generate, for every .1% or every $0.10 increase, you get about $2.3 million net. And again, remember, 20% of all the sales tax we collect has to go to CIP. So the number you're seeing up there is actually net of the CIP. And many years ago, we changed the 98.101 ordinance, so you don't have to put that money over there. You could redirect that to streets. Streets is a qualifying item under CIP, so that number would go up another 20% if we put it all towards that. But just to give you a rough idea, so to make up the gap that Ben identified, $8 million per year, you're talking about a .4 increase. So we'd have to go from 3.0 to 3.4 just to keep our roads the way they are. We'll talk a little bit more about issuing debt and what that would look like. You could always look at a property tax increase, so for every mill, you'd get about $2 million. So again, today, we charge 4.31 mills, so if we wanted to generate the $8 million or more, you're looking at doubling your property tax to make that work. And that's, again, just on the city side, not doubling everybody's property tax for the whole entire amount. This next one is, I think Lisa has brought this up before, so we wanted to reflect what we could generate from a marijuana perspective. And again, that would be about $1.5 million to a high of two. As more and more cities approve this, that number will actually go down due to the state's shareback program. And so moving forward, that number's probably more in the 1.2 to 1.4 range. Again, all of these require a vote of our citizens. The next set of options are.
Can I ask you a question?
I apologize, Randy, yes.
No, no worries. The recent ordinance that was passed in Denver the last election for sidewalks, specifically, had you considered something like that, and how does that fit into what we're looking at here?
So if we go to the next set of slides, we can talk a little bit about fee structure.
Sorry, I jumped.
That's okay. So the next set of slides would be around fees, okay? Councilmember Mormon, to your point, here's some examples. So currently, Westminster, Councilmember Marriott, charges a flat fee per unit. They put this in place a few years ago. It's $6 per month per water tap, that is anybody in the city. So if you are a resident, you pay $6. If you're Costco, you pay $6. That's the way Westminster is today. They generate about $3.2 million that they put directly towards their roads. They are proposing a commercial trip fee. That would be around a fee per use. So in other words, if I am a small business in Westminster and I have an average customer base of 20 per day, I'd pay a certain fee. If I was a larger business, I have 2,000 customers per day, I'd pay a larger fee. If I'm a resident, I'm assuming not too many, I would pay a lower fee. I don't know if that will go through. Their council is working on that. The next item would be the Councilmember Marriott charge. That would be about the number of vehicles that you own. And again, we would get this information from the state of Colorado, and we would assess a fee per vehicle. So this could be 50 cents per month, per vehicle, again, $6 a year times the number of vehicles owned in Arvada. This would charge residents only. And then, to your point, Councilmember Mormon, here's your sidewalk service charge. Look at, Fort Collins does this, Denver is working on it. This would be a flat fee for your linear sidewalk. So for example, I live on a cul-de-sac, maybe I have 300 feet of linear sidewalk. I'd pay more than somebody who had 50 feet of linear sidewalk. This fee would also be assessed to your larger commercial properties. And so if I am a King Supers and I've got 2,000 linear feet, I would pay more.
Talk about discrimination towards people who live on corners.
My fee would be very large, yes.
Would you just like me to bring my checkbook next week?
These are all fees, so they could all be enacted by a vote of council. Some of them are a little more difficult to administer, but a lot of them, once they're in place, pretty mechanical. We would dedicate the revenue directly towards improvements in the street infrastructure, and they would also require reporting each year. The final set of options is really just stuff that we're doing today. So the team does a ton of this. They look at reallocating remaining 98.101 funds. They dedicate right-of-way permit fees, sometimes looking at increasing that. They dedicate right-of-way permit fees, sometimes looking at increasing that. And then the final one, a moratorium penalty, which would really be if you cut into areas of the city that we've recently done work on, we might increase the fee to you. Not a big fan of the last one as it's very difficult to administer, but some places have put that in. It can be a little restrictive to growth and so that one kind of is difficult. That's why you heard Ben talk about really working way out in the future, trying to understand plans that are happening. So if we know that developer is coming in, we can maybe get them to do their cuts early on before fixing a road or a sidewalk. And there's many other ideas that could also come in front of you. We just wanted to show you some examples. Going along what it would cost us to issue debt if we went with the Big Bang Theory, the last set of slides that you saw, that said, if we made a large investment, what would it cost us? So these are twenty-year proposed debt issuances run by our financial consultant last week. And so if we did a G O debt or a sales and use tax debt, for every hundred million dollars we borrowed, we'd have about a seven million dollar payback annually. And then if we did a C O P or a direct placement, again, just borrowing money from a lender, either directly from a bank or through a pass-through entity, about one point six million for every twenty. And that would have a higher interest rate, a little more risky and does not as backed as well as either a sales tech debt, debt or G O debt would be. So again, if we're going to invest a hundred and fifty million, you're looking at needing probably in the vicinity of about a ten million dollar annual increase to be able to do that. So any questions along that line? I know these are very large numbers.
Yep. Mr. Jones or Ms. Ferre, do you have any questions at this point?
No, I have comments, but I think we're gonna save them.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
Brian, I may have just a quick question. This may be the wrong place to ask it, but do you have a slide coming up anywhere that shows what our streets maintenance spending has been over the last ten years or five years or four years or anything? Do you have something like that coming up?
We don't have it in the slide, in the packet. I think it was right in the front of the packet that was presented. Happy to bring that back or put it in the weekly. We have it going all the way back to the late nineties that we can share with you. I can tell you off the top of my head, our spend up until about 2014 was about three million per year. And then starting in 2014, we increased it to about five and a half million. And then, this is where my memory gets a little bad, after the vote in 2016 or the, the vote that didn't pass, we've been able to add to it as we've been going along. And right now, we're up to twelve and a half. And then as part of Ms. Gillis's proposed budget, we'll get to just under thirteen.
Yeah. I'd almost love to see a, a, you know, pick, pick some other indicator and see what our streets maintenance expenditures have been versus our annual general fund or sales tax collections or, you know, just something that, that's indexed so you have, so we have a relative, relative look at what, what we've been doing with streets maintenance funding over time.
Yeah, we can get back to you on that. So I think Britton is gonna finish us out.
Go ahead.
Okay, yes, I am. Ultimately, you heard Britton talk earlier that what we're looking for counsel from you is really a direction on next steps. Ultimately, that's not something we know you can make tonight. And we're hoping that you can add this maybe to your retreat in January as we're moving forward and really understand how you would like us to close this gap. Are we going to look at a sales tax increase? Are we going to research a fee structure? Ultimately, we feel like it's probably all the above. We're certainly going to include some of this information in the survey that's coming out next month and really see where our community is at and then really look for direction from you.
Ms. Ferre, did you want to make some comments?
I was just curious about up-down initiatives that we've put forward that are around increasing taxes. How successful have they been?
Not very.
We've only had two successful ballot issues, both of them for P D. The one that happened nineteen ninety-three and the one that happened in two thousand and five. All, all other ones have failed.
It seems that the marijuana one would be the most palatable because it's kind of an elect-in use of tax. So I'm just curious, of all the other times that we've done it, I'm, I'm just wondering if this might be different because it's not for everyone that would be taxed, just the use.
I don't know the answer to that.
Ms. Simpson?
Following up on Ms. Ferre's questions, so they've passed in ninety-three and oh-five. You mentioned, how many times have we run such types of ballot initiatives?
I'm only aware of two other times. I'm sure there's more.
So if I can offer a little bit of information, I'm happy to send this to all of council. Back when we were doing the charter review, I went back and charted out every single time that we've had any kind of ballot measure on the ballot, whether it was a Tabor measure or another type of measure. I can send you that whole list, so you could directly compare the wording of those ballot measures to see what they were seeking. And that might answer some of the more detailed questions about those ballot measures, how many times we've had those on the ballot and what they were for to-
Can you also provide the results, the voting results?
Yes, I can do that as well.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
That'd be useful. Ms. Maria?
Thanks. Just, just a couple of comments to close up. I was here on council in 2014, I believe it was, when we asked for a sales tax increase for roads. And it didn't pass and it wasn't even close. And I think that's not an accident and I don't know that, that there wasn't enough education or whatever. You can always hand, always Monday morning quarterback, things like that. And had it been very close, you might very well say, oh, if we'd done this instead of that or more of this or less of that, that, that it, that it may have passed. And that might actually be true. But this was such a wide margin that I think it was the overall idea of it. So that's a tough, a little bit of a tough nut because myself personally, I don't see anything that's really changed from 2014 to now that makes me think our community would look at it any differently now than they did then. So that leads you to things where the community doesn't get to decide it. But I think when they're telling you clearly on the things they get to decide, I don't think it necessarily makes it very palatable for them to have it imposed on them without them getting to decide. So I think these types of things are, are very, very difficult. And like you, you guys easily said, you know, this isn't anything we're gonna decide on tonight. But just my initial impressions, the overall of it is, I, it, it's pretty, pretty tough at this point, I think, to either go to the citizens. Of course, we always can and respect what the judgment the citizens make. But the other possibilities are also not that palatable. You know, there's nothing there where you look and you just say, well, that, that's it. And I know for myself, I would feel much more comfortable if we continue this, as, as we continue this discussion, that we get maybe a, a little deeper into some things like our, you know, how did we get here and, and how, how has our road maintenance spending been compared to the overall size of our budget or overall size of our sales tax collections or something like that? To show what, you know, where, what are we actually spending the money on? Because, again, my recollection, you'd have to provide us with the, with the information. But our sales tax collections have increased year after year and our road maintenance spending has gone up in stair steps. So we tend to, you know, as you mentioned, go from two or three million dollars to all of a sudden to five in one year and then all of a sudden to something else. And, and we really haven't followed the trajectory of our sales tax collections at all. And so I'd be interested in more of that type of information as we go forward and talk more in-depth about this issue and, and other, of course, financial needs that the city has.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. You know, this, the roads is something that I hear from my constituents all the time. And I think when we think about our community and some of the disparities between different parts of our community, that is the most significant visualization of that disparity. We have parts of our city and including in my own district where, you know, neighborhoods say, we're, we're being left behind. We're, you know, the forgotten part of our VADA. And we've heard that apply to many parts of our community. And I, and it comes back to me on, you know, the condition of the road. Because again, that's the first thing that people say is the biggest problem they see. And so, and, you know, and, and for me, this, this affects quality of life, but also property values and what that appearance is in, in that community. And, and I think something that wasn't talked probably enough about tonight so far in the presentation too is that, you know, the, the need for multimodal transportation and all of what we're looking at, that really needs to be part of the whole comprehensive plan and, and my perspective. And, and that comes back to safety issues. And just, you know, an example, I mean, we did talk some about sidewalks, but it's more than just that. And, and, and the quality of our transportation infrastructure as a whole, again, has that impact on quality of life. Folks that, you know, have different needs for accessibility and, you know, and this can vary day-to-day when you're trying to get from point A to point B and the sidewalk no longer is accessible because something has happened to that sidewalk or there's now a pothole that, that a wheelchair can no longer get around. So those things impact people every day and I think it's really our responsibility to do what we can as, as quickly as we possibly can to address this. And I think what, what I'll conclude by saying is that as we look at these different approaches, I think, one, we've got to be very transparent to the community about what it is we're going to be doing and what we're proposing moving forward and whatever type of way we're gonna fund it. And I think, you know, like the, the Ralston Road and Seventy-second Bond projects are great examples that I think to some extent successes, where we have been very transparent. And these are projects that people can definitely see day-to-day the impact and what the impact will be. And so I think when we are going to be proposing a funding mechanism that the community is going to need to buy in, they need to see what's gonna happen in my neighborhood and when is that going to occur before we get that buy-in. And that's what I constantly hear about from my constituents is when is my neighborhood gonna get this addressed? And I don't feel like right now we have a good enough answer for them. And so that, that would be my biggest thing in whatever we're proposing moving forward is that, that we come up with a very transparent plan that we can articulate to the community that they can then get behind. As far as the different options you laid out, I mean, I, I'm most attracted and want to know more about the, you know, the debt issuance because of our bond projects. It seems like that is something we have been able to get support behind. And so wondering if there's an avenue there that we can pursue a little more. Thank you.
Mr. Jones or Ms. Ferre, do you have any final comments?
No, thank you.
I'll just say that, I mean, this is a, this is a challenging conversation because I think it was, I think I was on council just a couple of years, the last, it was 2018, I think, is when we tried to do the, where we went to the voters and asked for a tax, an incremental tax increase to cover it. And it was pretty well laid out to, to Mr. Mormon's comments around, you know, what would that look like and how, you know, how could we get to certain streets? And maybe it wasn't down to the street, but it was surprising the feedback that we got from the voters based on that. And the roads aren't any better now than they were then. And so it really is, you know, what's the best funding mechanism? But I know just based on, you know, recent fees that we've imposed on citizens, that they don't like that either. And so it's a, it's a challenge and I, I think that it's one that's gotta be addressed. But, you know, again, I don't know if the best methodology is through the, the bond measures. Seem like those are more palatable, but again, I, it's gotta be addressed. I just, I don't know what the right answer is. And there's a lot of money that's needed just based on this presentation. So I think council's got a lot of work ahead of them to determine the next best path to take, so just my two cents.
Very good. Ms. Simpson, you get the final word.
Thank you. So I tend to agree with all of my colleagues' comments. I'm a big fan of sending things to the ballot because it gives, ultimately gives the voters empowered to have their say, even if we feel like we might know where they might land, which I'm speculating we probably do based off past history. That said, we don't know. They might ultimately decide something different. We don't speak for the voters. They speak for us ultimately. So I tend to be supportive of that and letting them come down and tell us what they would like us to prioritize.
Right. Very good. Thank you for the presentation. Lots to be thought about. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to a response to homelessness and an update from our January ninth study session.
We're kind of tripping on each other on who's introducing topics and that's my fault, so I apologize. I do want to introduce this just really briefly, that Deputy City Manager Don Wick and our homeless coordinator Erin Intencio will be presenting tonight. This is an update from what you received back in May?
January.
January. It's been a while. So I think you'll be pleased with the progress and aware of what else we need to be doing.
Very good.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council. As City Manager Gillis just talked about, we are here tonight to provide an update to you all from the January ninth study session. And before we get started, I would like to take a moment just to, I don't think the council's actually had a chance yet to meet Erin Intencio, our homeless program manager. And so Erin's here tonight. She's gonna be talking with you about some of the things that she's working on. And we also will be hearing from our chief related to police public safety and our judge related to the courts and some of her processes. So to, thank you. To get started, this is a slide that I showed back in January about what problems this is that we're trying to solve. And without reading all of this, essentially what we're trying to do is create a coordinated regional response to homelessness, addressing the visible unhoused population, aligning those resources and essentially helping others who are struggling with homelessness, not only in our community but in our region. These are major and significant problems that we're trying to solve. Most actively, we have been, from January ninth presentation to today, we've been very active in trying to address the goals and objectives that we presented to you then and, and later on in this presentation, I'm gonna cover those things and show you what the team has been working on and has accomplished over this time. But I think without question, one of the things that we have really discovered is that the, this is a very complicated, complex issue that has a wide variety of perspectives about how to solve and address this. And we have tried to take the time to take in all of this information and help you and the city teams really understand and give direction toward what we can do to work towards some solutions. So with that, I'd like to introduce Erin and we will start working our way through this presentation.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
It's nice to meet all of you face-to-face. I've been here since May, so I'm excited to finally get the opportunity to speak to what we're doing with homelessness. So this is a slide on what the causes are. One of them, the one on the left, the self-reported causes from H M I S. This was done over a year. It is from 2021 to 2022. This was an opt-in question. So in Homeless Services, we use a system called H M I S, Homeless Management Information System, where we track everyone who's experiencing homelessness to track progress, primarily for housing outcomes. So over the last year or over the year 2021 to 2022, participants had the ability to opt in and say what their experience was and what the cause of homelessness was. So that's one of the slides. The other one was from the point in time, which is done every year. It's been happening since 2015, I believe. And so one-night snapshot, we're on the coldest night of the year. People go out, it's usually the last week of January. Staff, volunteers, anyone can go out and, and actually count who is sleeping on the street that night. So different data sets, but what is the same in both of the slides is that the top five reasons don't change. They just move up and down, but they're still the same. And so there is this consistent theme about why people are experiencing homelessness. There's about ten questions in the survey that people could answer in addition to these five, so a total- five, so a total of 15, and these continue to be the top five.
I wonder to what extent Reason Five, alcohol or substance abuse, is really what leads to the other four? I mean, I think there's a distinct possibility, and the fact that it's self-reporting, that people tend to minimize the alcohol or substance abuse, as far as having an impact on not being able to pay rent, relationship going bad, whatever, so.
Yeah, and I think you brought up a good point. It is all self-report data. So here are the point in times from last year and compared to this year. The interesting thing, well, there's a couple of interesting things. One of the most interesting is that it almost doubled. And this shouldn't be a surprise, this is what the whole Denver metro area is seeing, is that year over year, the numbers are not just going up, but they are like, going up pretty substantially. So that's something that's pretty key in the difference. The other thing that is the same across the last two years, is that one in every two people are experiencing homelessness for the first time. And that's true to Jefferson County. That's not necessarily true in some of the other cities that also did their point in time, but for two years in a row, that has been true for Jefferson. So it's something to keep in mind. We, this year, there's also the opportunity to do a breakdown by each city, and we have not gotten our data for that yet. So here's the point in time broken out a little bit more, oh wait, these are, there we go, I'm sorry, there was some extra slides in there. So this is for, so we looked at the whole county as a whole, and we saw the number was about 900 people. This is the breakdown now of our VADA of what is true today. So this is information that's taken out of our HMIS system. So out of the 553 people that are experiencing homelessness in our VADA, about 400 of them are at the rising. The day shelter is that long bar at the bottom, they use HMIS. They're one of the few organizations here that do. And so they are who was using that. Rapid Rehousing is Family Tree, and Street Outreach is a combination of teams, but primarily the Arvada team.
Erin Evans, can I ask you a quick question about this slide?
Of course, yeah.
This would, this slide would seem to infer that there are 553 people at any time who are homeless in our VADA, but is that what this slide means? Or does this slide mean, when I see the dates on there, it's January 1st through July 31st, that over that time period, there were 553 people contacted who were homeless at that time?
Yeah, yeah, so from that timeframe, so from January to now, that's how many people participate in a program that has HMIS.
Okay, so do we have any idea, on any given day, how many people there are? Does that, January 1st to July 31st is 200 and something days, 210 days?
Yeah.
Does that mean there's three or four people a day, or does that mean there's 30 or 40 people a day? Or, you know, what does that actually mean on any given day? What would that have looked like?
Yeah, so that's a really good question, and I have a slide that might address that, I think, maybe next. The other important thing to note of this, though, to your point, is that these are only three places that are participating. Our VADA just got HMIS access recently, and so something that we're also talking about as a region is who has access to this? Because we know these numbers are not super accurate, because we don't have a full picture of everyone that's participating at this time. So here, this isn't an answer, but this is a little bit closer. So here are two different groups, side by side. And so I talked to both of them and said, how many of these people do we think are overlapping? What do we think is the amount of people utilizing services each day? And it kind of varied. So I'll start with the data, and then I'll get back to your question. So Mission Arvada, from January until now, they have served just shy of 8,000, or, I'm sorry, have had 8,000, a little shy of 8,000 visits. So that could be the same person coming every day, that could be the same, you know, group of people coming every day. And they do feel like they have a pretty solid base of people, participants that are coming. Of that 8,000 visits, about 7,000 of them are unique individuals. So those are different people using their service out of the whole database. And that was also confirmed through HMIS. Of the 700 people who are registered that are unique individuals, 412 are registered in HMIS. So there's already an undercount that we're able to see, just through that data set. And then next to it is Community Table. Actually, let me go back to Mission Arvada. So Mission Arvada serves one purpose in Arvada, they're an emergency day shelter. So they work with people who are chronically unhoused, people who are living on the street, and they can do basic emergent services. Community Table doesn't work quite as closely with people who are unhoused. But when I asked them, how many of the people do you think are living unhoused? They started collecting that data recently, and that was just a little bit over 300 people. When asked, do you think they're the same, they, we do think that they're probably the same 300 people going between the two. So Community Table has 25,000 total visits, just in the last couple of months. This is all from January until August. And then of those visits, 12,000 of them are unique individuals or households.
But to be fair, Community Table serves lots of people who are not homeless.
Right, so the Mission Arvada is people who are homeless, experiencing homelessness, and Community Table is people who are living in poverty and who are experiencing homelessness.
Or, or not, not, I mean, these numbers, they didn't have 25,000 visits from people who are homeless.
Yes.
They had 25,000 total visits. Some of those people are just low income, in a tight spot, whatever it is that, why they're addressed, accessing those services, doesn't mean they're necessarily homeless.
Right, and so that number that they were able to report on was 300. Yeah, thank you, sorry for the confusion. So another way that we're looking at data is RGIS mapping. And so this was brought up in January as well, as something that PD was going to be doing at that time. This is the map of interventions from January 1st until last Monday. And so there is a key on there, but what you'll see is, on top of the PD map, we put our new outreach team efforts on top of it. And what we're trying to do with this map is track and see where encampments popping up, what is the theme, and is there a targeted intervention that we can use to go to those different areas? And so it's not really a surprise that Kipling, that's the target area, Wadsworth is up there, the train tracks, and these are areas that we knew, but now we're starting to get data to really show that this is where people are starting to congregate. What we're going to do with this data is, we're still adjusting the app currently to be able to take notes and pull data in a different way, but the goal is to be able to see how many people we're actually talking to, so we can do an outreach effort, track if they're the same people, and then figure out, again, what strategy we can use to do that targeted intervention, to help support people who are unhoused and get them into the right service.
Okay, so one of the things that we talked about in January had to do with the impact on the business community, especially in the Old Town area, but business in generally, about what they're experiencing related to homelessness. And I followed up with some sources in the business community to check, to see whether or not these same concerns exist today, and essentially, they are very much the same as what we saw in January. And, you know, basically, the list is human waste and sanitary conditions, theft from businesses, vandalism. We have visitors to Old Town that are concerned about their safety while they're there. There's been mention, of course, of the school, the safety of children in that area, and visitors to the library, as well as theft and safety issues inside the transit hub, the parking garage area. And then businesses in general continue to report a concern about increasing crime. 11% of businesses have put homelessness as one of the top three challenges that they deal with. Businesses have been concerned about open fires in camps that are near or in the area of their business. And then also, a discussion about businesses wanting to try to provide mental health first aid training for their employees, so that they can try to help diffuse and de-escalate situations. So we recognize, as we do this work, that this is how the issue is impacting our business community. So as far as the community survey results are concerned, the last community survey that we did, a little over 67% ranked homelessness as an issue that was important to them. So we don't know, you know, exactly what that means, but we know that this issue is important to them, whether they are looking to try to find different ways to solve the issue, or whether they're concerned for their own personal safety. It's not really clear, but what we know is that this is an issue that is important to people in our community. So I'm going to turn this back over to Erin to talk a little bit now, focusing in on what we have been doing since January in terms of working with partners and working toward our goals.
And could you talk a little faster?
Me?
I'm kidding.
Oh, I was like, I talk really fast. Thank you, that's a good reminder to slow down. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the partners that we have, and some of these are going to be repeats from January, but there's going to be some really exciting additions as well. So we're still very much in collaboration with Jefferson County as a whole, and some of the cities there, working on, and they're listed up there, working on a path forward as a group. This is a regional issue, and so we need to tackle it from a different, a couple of different perspectives, and one is as a region. And so that group is really important. We're meeting pretty regularly to figure out what direction we want to go, and how we can support each other, what gaps we have, and who can help fill them potentially. Other key partners on here is obviously the City of Arvada departments. The Starvada team has been helping with some outreach efforts. When they're not on calls, they are doing outreach at least once a week to really help build rapport and find connection with some of the people who are unhoused. Jeffco Public Schools is another key partner, working with McKinney-Bento, is a relationship that we are starting. And then Target is an unexpected partner, but we're starting to work with them on some strategy, because they are seeing some encampments pop up over there. Faith-based. So I'm not going to go through every single team up here as well, but if you'll notice, again, the difference between the January list and this is that there's just more partners on there. Dawn, something that Dawn had asked me to do when I first started, was to reach out to new partners that would be really good collaborators, but also build a deeper relationship with some of the partners we already had. There just wasn't someone in place that could dedicate a lot of time to that. And so I have been spending a lot of time in the community, meeting with a variety of people, people who are unhoused, faith-based communities, nonprofits, and so on. So we will continue to work closely with the groups that are listed up here. Was that slow enough?
You're good.
I'm good now, okay.
So in January, we talked about what should the city's role really be? And I wanted to come back to this and try to emphasize that we don't think that the city should actually be the service provider and the entity that is, you know, trying to solve homelessness in terms of us doing all of the work. And instead, what we're advocating for is establishing a strong governance structure in the region that coordinates these efforts, that we help lead the effort to develop a regional strategic plan for how to address homelessness. We're going to come back to our strategic work here in a little bit. Helping to understand how to assist our providers and our partners in executing the plan, helping to manage the services and help them be coordinated, so that they can all work together to help us solve this problem. Being a catalyst for the change that is needed to address the issue, and then, of course, engaging our city council to help us with any lobbying efforts that are needed for this. But I just want to emphasize that we don't believe that the city should actually be the service provider that are providing all of the services that may be needed. So at this point, another important partner in this is our public safety team, our police and courts. And I know everybody knows Chief Brady, and I would like to introduce him to talk a little bit about this from the police department's perspective.
Chief. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am Ed Brady, Chief of Police for the Arvada Police Department, and I'm here tonight to talk about a few slides, to talk about the police perspective. As you're aware, we have a unit dedicated towards this issue, our core unit, which is Community Outreach Resource and Enforcement. And we really see their work as being elements of each of those. They provide outreach and resources to members of this community, but they're also there to enforce our municipal code and our state laws when appropriate. As Dawn mentioned earlier, we get many complaints from the business community and others, specifically in Old Town. I know each of you have received complaints that get forwarded to me to address. And fortunately, we have two officers, one of them is here tonight as part of our core unit, to address this, try to work with those in the homeless community, and also the businesses. You can see that our contacts over the years has steadily increased. The last column there is just year-to-date, so it's a little bit lower, but I would mention that I think it's probably trending down slightly from years past. But this is a high call driver for us. Our core unit has a lot of partnerships as well. I know Erin mentioned some that the city has, but they've been working in this area for a while now. And I really present this not to go over each of those, but to show that they're problem solvers. They're trying to work with different areas to address this issue, and not just enforce our way out of this issue. This issue is an expensive issue for the police department. We calculated for our calls for service and the hourly rate for the officers working, that it's about $350,000 that we spent in 2022. We have two officers and a sergeant who also has other responsibilities, so just basically a half a sergeant dedicated towards this area. We have two co-responders, and we will have a case manager in the near future. Now, they have other responsibilities other than this community, but they are involved in this. And in 2022, we spent about $60,000 in camp cleanups. So in total, almost $1 million we spent in 2022. Over the last year, we have refined our, our method in which we post for abandoned homeless camps, and homeless camps in general. And we've worked with other city departments to really streamline this. So our core unit gave training to the other departments that may run across this, whether it be parks, public works, utilities, to identify unoccupied camps. We're not asking that members, that employees in those department address anyone, we're not looking to put them in any sort of harm's way, or have any confrontation with anyone. But if they come across an unoccupied camp, they will post it, and then we map it, as Erin mentioned, and then that gets sent to RIS to get cleaned up quickly. And so I feel like that has been working. It was encouraging to hear our Parks Director say that she has received less complaints this year in the parks than she has in the past. Camp cleanup is an expensive task as well. You can see there, just through January, we've spent about $52,000 in camp cleanups. Now fortunately, we do receive a few grants. We received $50,000 through Safer Streets grant, and CDOT will pay for cleanups on their property, up to, I think, about $50,000. The cost of these cleanups range from just a couple hundred dollars to almost $6,000, as you can see on that slide. So they can be very costly. And then the last section there just shows what it's cost to clean up camps along the transit hub, a four-month total of about $16,000. So with that, I'd like to introduce our municipal judge, Katie Kurtz.
Your Honor.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and council members. My name is Katie Kurtz, I'm the presiding judge for the City of Arvada. I want to tell you about some of the exciting and fun things that we're doing in our municipal court, to address and support our defendants who are currently experiencing homelessness. As you all know, we have the One Small Step Court, which we started in September of 2021, so we're almost two years into our program. And this is an alternative specialty court structure that, rather than providing punitive sanctions, really looks to provide services and resources to defendants who are experiencing homelessness, who are coming in on low-level crimes committed as a result of their homelessness. Right now, we currently have 52 active participants in the One Small Step Court program, and what that means is those are people who are attending regularly. We have 10 who have graduated since the restart of our program in 2021. We'll have three more in the next month. The most exciting thing I have to report out is that we have a 0% recidivism rate with those people who have graduated from the program, which I think is a huge, it just speaks volumes about the success of our program. That's massively significant, given that most of our defendants come into the program having at least five, 10 cases at a time. Right now, we've got one defendant who's got 32 pending cases. So recidivism is very common amongst our defendants, so to have 0% recidivism is shocking to me and awesome. We currently have 58 defendants on warrant status, that means they've failed to appear since their original court date. With those who are on warrant status, if they have a low-level offense that is not jailable, they have a PR bond, which means that it's very hard to get them back into court. But if they do have an But if they do have an arrest or an offense that is jailable, we do issue a casualty bond, so we will see them at some point on video advisements and with hopes that we can resolve the case in some way. Some changes to our program that we've recently had is that we've moved our court from Monday mornings to Tuesday afternoons. Our first Tuesday afternoon was last week, and we saw a significant increase in our attendance. It was the second-most-attended OSS arraignment date of the year, so that was really exciting. I think that shift to Tuesday afternoons will not only benefit our city teams, but it'll also be a huge benefit to our defendants who show up to court. We have implemented a phase structure, so all defendants come into the One Small Step program on Phase 1, and they have to meet certain expectations before they can progress to the next phase, Phase 2. We've got four phases in total, and each phase has certain requirements, so expectations are set out very clearly at the onset of the program, so they know what is expected of them to progress and to eventually, hopefully, successfully graduate. We received a grant from the First Judicial District Bar Association recently. This grant will, gave us a small pot of money, which we can use towards our incentive programs. So when a defendant progresses from one phase to another, they get a small gift card. And it's our way of congratulating them and giving them some sort of reward for doing a lot of hard work. A lot of our defendants are really putting in the hard work, really showing up. They show up now every Tuesday, and it's really awesome to see that progress. And as I think we've discussed in the past, we have a kiosk for Jefferson Center for Mental Health. So rather than sending our defendants down for an intake appointment, which for a period of time was taking six weeks to two months just to get an intake appointment, they now can get that right then and there through the kiosk, and so that's been a massive improvement to our system. And with that, I will turn it back over to, I believe, Dawn. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do now is to take you back to January when we set our immediate, intermediate, and long-term goals, and we talked with the council about those on January 9th, and talk to you about the progress that has been made. And I think the first thing that I would like to say about this is that shortly after January 9th, we assembled a team of our very important city partners, and so we're talking about our public safety team, the city manager's office, Public Works, VCN, CED, housing team, and our data team, mostly who makes up this group. And we meet every other week, and we talk about the progress that we're making. We hold each other accountable for the work that needs to be done. We have very good debates and discussions about whether we should do this or do that, or is this effective or not, and all of that has come together to really show you a lot of work that this team has accomplished since January. And I'd like to just go through this a little bit. I know you all have the slides, and I won't go through each of those, but I think in terms of the immediate, well, I would say this about immediate, intermediate, and the longer-term goals is that, other than the few exceptions, we have actually been working on all of them. And the team has been, has been pretty aggressively pursuing these, which I've been really grateful for over the past seven months here. But I think some of the things that's really important is that we were able to reach those agreements with Adams County, and we're now able to access their data, and an important thing about that is that the, the map that Erin showed you a few minutes ago that showed the city that overlaid the PD work with the, work of the outreach team, the GIS map, we can actually now combine data from Adams County and to be able to show that flow as the, the contacts that we're making flow throughout not only Arvada but into the Adams County side, and, and we can watch this migration much better than we were able to do before. And then in addition to that, the agreement that we also reached with Adams County to utilize their street outreach team has been beneficial. They've been active for a couple of months now. They're also coordinating with the Starvada team as well as our own homeless navigator in housing, and so it's a good, strong team that goes out there every week and works at homeless street navigation. So that's been really important to us. One piece that we've also been working on is how do we look at relocating homeless services outside of Arvada, and while those discussions are still occurring, we have been working on trying to make progress in that direction. There still is a lot of work to do, but we continue to work at addressing that. And then a big thing that Erin has talked about is getting our city teams and service providers to be using HMIS so that we can actually track people that are using services. We also have, we sent out an RFP for, to contract for a homelessness study, which would include the pestle analysis as well as an examination of what homelessness looked like in each of the cities in Jefferson County, and basically trying to understand what each city has in place and what maybe some cities do but other cities don't, and understanding our gaps so that we could become more consistent across the county and across all of the cities. Unfortunately, when we put the RFP out, we only had one return on that, and the proposal that we received was north of $3 million to conduct that work. Because of the expense of that, we did not move forward with doing that. That has been put on hold, and over the last couple of months, the team has been working with the region to figure out how we might be able to use other data sources in order to basically arrive at the same sort of understanding. It, it's just gonna take us longer because we're relying on existing teams in order to be, to be able to do that.
Mr. Mormon.
Excuse me, Dawn, sorry to interrupt. I, I had thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought for those studies and that analysis, we were looking at some grants from the state to help us fund that, is that correct?
We would have been looking at, at grant funding in order to do that. We did not have one specifically in mind before we started doing it, but we knew that there may be some grant funding that could, that could be available for us. After we saw what the cost of that was gonna be, we, we stopped trying to pursue that until we could look at other options.
Is, is there a way to either, you know, enter some form of negotiations with the contractor to see how to, you know, do a piece of it, and what would that cost? And, and, or to put out an RFP that clearly states this is the budget limit, and what can you offer to stay in this limit, or is there different ways to approach it that way?
Yes, there are, and we have had some discussion about reworking the scope of work. So maybe it wouldn't, for example, include every city, but it would be a sampling. We've also talked about, is it something that we could do here in Arvada and then extrapolate? So yes, we have been looking at those alternatives. On the intermediate goals, you'll see that a lot of those are in progress, and it, it, it may not seem like there, that that's a lot of progress, but we have actually done a lot of work around, for example, building information around what grants there are that could be available. You'll see that it shows on here that we haven't started it, that's related to building the pipeline. But we've been looking a lot at what grants and funding are available. We've been working on engaging with Build for Zero, for example, and also looking at establishing data collection and analysis, and I, and I wanna talk for a second about the data collection and analysis. So there is so many disparate parts of the city that are involved in this effort that what we have been working on trying to do is to bring together all of the information that we can gather from the different departments and try to understand costs, try to understand what everybody is doing. You, you kind of got a sampling of that tonight from the chief around what the cost of the PD is seeing. We, we are trying to build a dataset that will include all of our other departments. And then actually, our data team is working at trying to help us understand other forms of data that we have, for example, sharing from Adams County, also understanding data that we're capturing from marking camps, camp cleanup, marking unoccupied camps, and how can we take all of that information together and analyze that in a way that will help us make better data-driven strategies for what we can be doing. And so we think that building our data capability is going to be really important to us as we go forward. So that's a big piece of, of what we're also working on now. And then in the long term, there are several of these that we have already gotten started on. For example, working on the Regional Navigation Center, that those conversations continue to occur, trying to figure out how we address families that are homeless as well, how, how we work on that. You've, you've heard some things from our housing team about expanding housing options, and our VCN team, along with some others, is, they're looking at the value that could be created if we looked at a park ranger program for not only helping us continue to work on the homelessness issues in our parks, but also how to create a better experience for our visitors who are using the parks, and how can we combine that to make it a more efficacious strategy overall for our parks. Some of the things that we have not yet gotten to include, you know, some other housing models such as evaluating motels that could potentially be used as transitional housing, and also trying to figure out how we can get our service providers and nonprofits to operate all but emergency services. That's part of our initial work that we're doing by understanding who all of our partners are. How do we put that together and then figure out how to coordinate to help them help us make all of this work? So overall, the picture I'm trying to paint for the council is that we have taken the objectives that you gave us direction to move forward with, and this is what the team has really been working on over, over the last seven months as, as we've been moving forward. So wanna talk a little bit about funding. So recently, our housing team was awarded just over $1.9 million over three years on a transformational homeless grant, and part of the funding will be divided among these three categories, street outreach, bridge housing, and emergency sheltering. And so once this grant actually comes to us and we can put that into place, our team that, that our, our housing team is a part of will begin implementing and using the money to address these strategies, and Carrie Espinoza has goals that are set for that, and we're, we're actually really looking forward to being able to utilize this funding to help further this. We're also, as I mentioned earlier, looking at an internal analysis across, across city departments so that we have an understanding about what we're spending with, you know, costs that are already budgeted and allocated that we're, that we're using for this effort and what that gap is so that we can have a better understanding of what kind of grant funding and dollar amounts it is that we're gonna need moving forward. And then we're also working with other cities in Jefferson County to collaborate to secure other grants and identify other funding resources that not only Arvada, but the region could benefit from if we were to apply and receive grant funding. So we know that there are either currently or will be grant funding opportunities at the state and federal level. Most of those are likely to require matching resources, and that can be hard dollars, it could be inclined, it could be, you know, services that we're already providing or things we're already doing, and so we will be, you know, looking at how that picture is going to look as we go forward, once we have a strategic direction for where we need to take things from here. The one thing that I would also point out is that we currently have another pending DOLA grant application that will assist with expanding some navigation center work, and we're waiting to hear some decisions from DOLA, we expect that we will know something about that sometime in September. So in terms of next steps, I think probably the most important thing that we're gonna do next is engage in a strategic planning process. So between January and now, what we've really been working on is getting some fundamentals set and in place and working so that we can start addressing some of the immediate needs that we have. But we're really reaching a point where we need to develop a strategic plan going forward so that we can give our team direction, and as we work with our regional partners, our regional partners will have an understanding of what Arvada plans to do related to this issue, and we wanna make sure that we're not outside of what other jurisdictions are doing 'cause it makes it harder for everybody to work together and share resources. So the first step that we will be doing in the next few weeks is our internal city team will have some strategic planning where we want to get the, the views, the ideas, and the experience with our internal team and have some idea of where our internal team is, is at at the moment in terms of what they think that we should be doing in the future. The second phase is, is that we are going to be bringing together a wide diversity of our community partners to come into a second phase of the strategic planning process, and the intention is, is that we need to hear from community members, our service providers, to understand their perspective around the strategic planning process with the intention then of combining these together along with our council's direction so that we can determine the direction going forward. And one of the things we're really interested in with our community partners is there are organizations where there are some very entrepreneurial folks that are doing some really exciting things around the work that they are doing, and they have innovated in some programs, and they've innovated in some strategies, and we would like to try to leverage that in our discussions around our own strategy planning. Then we wanna, as I said, incorporate all of that to create a strategic plan, which then we would come back and share with the council, continue to work on our intermediate and long-range goals, develop cost models, develop our data sources and structures, and work with all of that feedback to determine where we go next. So with that, we're here for any questions or, or other direction that the council may wanna provide as we continue to move forward.
Let me start off with Mr. Jones. Do you have anything you'd like to comment on at this point?
No, I appreciate the update. It's certainly one that I think is gonna take a lot of time and attention, so I appreciate the work.
Ms. Ferre.
Yes, the only question that I had was how are we using or leveraging the new Housing Advisory Committee in some of these points that you've mentioned?
I, I miss what committee?
The Housing Advisory.
Housing Advisory Committee. So we actually use the feedback and information through Carrie, and Carrie is a part of our internal team that is working on this issue, so Carrie, Carrie regularly provides us with feedback that also comes from that group.
Thank you.
Mr. Marriott.
A couple, a couple of comments. I think the, one of the key things I picked up out of there that I was really happy to see is the overall philosophy that the city is really a facilitator in these efforts, that this isn't a city program, that we're, we are not in the human services business or the, the service provider in, in these necessary services that people need. But we do play a role, obviously, in facilitating, so I'm happy to see that, and I would like to just make sure that that remains reinforced as we go forward in, in all these types of plans and discussions. I also liked very much the part where you, you know, found out that this one study was gonna cost millions of dollars and that, that we had the wisdom to put the brakes on and, and back up a little bit. You know, I will note that with the most recent election in Denver, we now have a new mayor in Denver who is restructuring their whole homeless program and may very well provide a better, better environment for us, as it appears to me. The new mayor in Denver is very engaged in trying to provide significant homeless services in the city of Denver, and I think it's very logical to argue that some of the- And I think it's very logical to argue that some of the homeless problems we have here are a direct result of Denver pushing homeless people out of Denver and into all the suburbs. And I know that's not exclusively why we have the problem, but certainly you can argue that that's a contributing factor, and now that may ebb the other way for a while with this new mayor. So I would hate to see us get deeply into some course of action or some expenditure that may no longer be appropriate based on the changing tides of people around us. And my third observation, then, would be, I think our police department is doing a tremendous job here. You know, several weeks ago, we had one of the property owners in Old Town come to us at a council meeting and say, hey, I don't know what you're doing, but keep doing it and do more of it, because actually, things are better. And since that time, I've spoken to a number of residents, visitors, and business owners in Old Town. And some have said, eh, I hesitate to say it's better because I don't want you to do anything any different. But I haven't had any of them who say, no, no, I disagree with that completely, it's worse. Universally, people have said it's either the same or it's better, with lots of people saying it's better. So I think that, you know, as you take this team approach with this, towards this, I think the police, obviously, are doing a fantastic job and have some insight probably for this program. And then lastly, I just want to compliment the whole team on, in a very short order, coming up with some at least actions with this very broad program, some actionable steps, and that those steps have been being acted upon. And I think that's good, and I think you guys are doing a great job with it. I don't believe this is one of the core functions of cities. I believe this is something we've had foisted upon us, so we probably have no choice. And I think it just is a testament to the credit of you guys that you have been able to come up with a plan, execute some actions on that plan, that at least for the moment appear to have made some difference for some people. And so I think that's all good, and I would encourage us to continue doing it while we also keep the restraint to know this isn't one of our core functions. We have no choice here, but we need to do all these actions with some restraint so that we maintain the ability to do the things that are our core functions, which of course was the first workshop we heard tonight. So those are my general comments.
Mr. Mormon.
Thank you, and I want to echo Mr. Marriott's comments. I really appreciate all the work that you and your team, Erin, and everyone else has done, our navigators, Chief Brady, and the core team. I have a lot of respect for all the work you are doing on this very important issue that's impacting our community in many different ways. I would say that not only do we have a role as a facilitator, we have a role as a leader on this, because it does impact all the functions of our city, and, you know, we have a responsibility to support our residents and our businesses, and this is something that impacts all of them. And I, you know, constantly remind myself that many of the people, if not most, who find themselves homeless in Arvada are Arvadans. They are our neighbors. And so it's not an us versus them kind of issue or problem. It's all of us in this, that we need to solve this together. And I think, you know, as we have talked through this and had conversations, one of the challenges or gaps that we've identified is a lack of coordination regionally. So I really appreciate us as a city saying that we're going to try to help lead in that effort. We can't do it alone, but we're going to try to lead and try to move that forward where we've seen, you know, others are not taking on that responsibility or that role. And I think that, you know, I'm continually looking at how are we going to be lowering those barriers to get people to services that they need and get them on the path to permanently being housed? And that is, you know, one of the biggest challenges, and I appreciate you identifying, you know, the emergency shelter piece, because I certainly find that in other communities, getting people in that door, that physical door where there's, you know, low barriers to get in, to get services, getting that housing first is so key before they can start to fully utilize any types of services. And so I think that is so crucial in our approach, and so I just continue to advocate that we look through that lens. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo the comments that have been previously made. Sometimes it's not so great to be the mayor because everything that needed to be said has already been said, so I'm not going to pile on. But I will pile on that I think the team's doing a great job. You know, when Steve Howard came to us a few weeks ago and said, don't know what you're doing, but it's working, you know, I think our police department's doing a great job. I want to commend the city attorney's office as well, because, you know, they are putting some teeth into some ordinances that gives the judge, then, the capacity of people who, you know, when people want to be helped, by golly, we're going to help get them the help. We're not going to be the help provider. And I think what John said, I wholeheartedly agree with, that, you know, we're not in the provider business and that, but we can move people in the right direction. But what the city attorney's office has empowered for the judge and for our police department is the ability for those who refuse to comply and who just, you know, hopefully, it's a small percentage of the homeless population, but they're the most visible, that we've got some teeth now, and frankly, some jail beds, that will help alleviate that issue. So I think everybody's doing a terrific job. If it was easy, it would have been done a long time ago. And it's not easy, but I think you're moving us in the right direction.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gillis, do you have anything else for us tonight?
No, sir.
Did we give you adequate direction?
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you. We're adjourned.